We're all here, we might as well get started. So this is the Great Barrington Planning Board meeting for Thursday, April 27th. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspended certain provisions of the open meeting law and Governor Keely's March 29, 2023 revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting of the planning board will be conducted both in person and via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public and community members may attend the meeting in person or for those who wish to do so remotely may by following the instructions on this agenda. For those who are not in person, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by technological means. In addition, pursuant to MGL 7C 30A, Section 20F, after notifying the chair of the public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open meeting, excuse me, of an open session of a meeting of a public body, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. And any members of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the chair. The listings of the agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Finally, per Section 241.1 of the Plan Code, except for procedural and housekeeping matters, town residents shall have the right to address a board on any item that requires a vote at any time before a board votes on that item. Such residents will be allowed as much time as components of an item is permitted to have. So this meeting is being recorded. We do have, it looks like three attendees. Remote, is that right? Attendees remote?
Yes.
Excellent, and a handful of people here in the meeting room with us, welcome everyone. Um, do, we don't need to roll call attendance, right?
Correct, you're all physically present.
All physically present, okay, so do we have any formates? See, none, we'll move on to the minutes of April 13th meeting. Do we have a motion to approve as amended? Thank you, Jonathan. Hearing a discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm staying.
And one abstention? Okay, thank you very much. Item number three is town meeting preparation, so. Chris?
Yes.
You want to present the outline approach for the warrant articles?
The board's business tonight should be to finalize the draft plan board report to the town meeting. As the board's aware, the board is required to make an oral or written presentation to the town meeting on its recommendations on the articles. So this forms the basis of that report. I submitted a draft to you all by email. Hopefully you've been able to give it a read. It summarizes the basic purpose. Thanks, summarize the basic purpose of each article and the board's recommendation on each. There are seven planning board sponsored zoning articles and one citizen sponsored zoning article. The planning board ones are Articles 30 through 36 on Monday nights, town meeting. And the citizens zoning articles are Article 38. So they're all discussed in your report and I'd ask the board to review it, make any changes and vote to adopt it tonight.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's the meat of tonight's meeting. Jonathan had some minor edits. I don't know, Jonathan, did you want to go through those now or did you provide?
I did. There was one, I think I had public hearings plural.
Yeah, yeah. Dominimus.
Editor-in-chief Jonathan Hinkin has provided. Okay. So in terms of each of the articles, we've been talking about most of these for many months, so we'll just run through them for the benefit of the folks that are here in the room and that are participating. So Article 30 is definitions. These amendments will update Section 11 and other instances in the zoning bylaw to substitute the word unit in term, in place of the term family in zoning definitions such as dwelling, single family, et cetera. Since the term family means people in that group are related, the term excludes the wide variety of household living arrangements that exist among people not related by blood, marriage, or adoption. Using the term unit instead of family will ensure zoning does not exclude non-nuclear families, unmarried couples, group homes, and people who choose to live together in group housing arrangements. And we had recommended this previously. And any changes?
And just to be clear, it's not time to change recommendations, just.
And pick someone to present it.
Yes.
That's the hard part.
And we can, we can certainly, we can certainly do that. And maybe we, is there something that's strongly about presenting this one that wants to go with you?
I'd be happy to do it.
Okay. Simultaneously assign names. All right, Article 31 is about performance standards. These amendments will amend Section 6.4 performance standards in order to codify certain criteria that are applicable to types of land uses rather than leaving these criteria to the depression of the permanent granting authority. For example, exterior lighting is frequently a concern of neighbors and permitting boards, but there are currently no regulations. This amendment will create clear regulations for lighting and for site design planning. Obviously, we recommended this, so this is the one about performance standards. You wanted to present something else?
Yeah. It's got Pedro written all over it.
Article 32 is a table of use regulations. These amendments are proposed in order to regulate three-unit residential uses in the same manner as two-unit residential uses. In other words, three-unit structures would be allowed by right in all zones rather than by special permit in residential zones and by right in business zones. It would thus classify those uses with four or more units as multi-unit residents whose uses would be allowed only as per Row 83 of the Table of Use Regulations. These changes will make towns' definition of multi-unit housing consistent with the state definition. And it also recognizes triplexes are often indistinguishable from one and two-unit homes. Do we want to use the term triplex?
It's kind of a loaded term.
So I mean, we could stick with three-unit residential buildings or.
Yeah.
Leave out triplex.
Yeah.
Reference.
But I mean, you think duplex, but I think locally triplex is.
Given what's happening.
Yes.
Yeah.
Does that make sense, everyone?
Yeah, just like, say, three units, I think.
Is it three-unit homes?
Residents.
Or later in the sentence, you say one and two-unit homes.
We can change that to residents as well. Great. Anybody want to take that one? No?
Oh, you're really giving me something that's, that's a word, mouth, it's twister, but I'll be glad to do.
No, I mean.
I just don't know what's.
They get harder as they go.
That's what I was thinking. Okay, I'll take it. Thank you, Malcolm.
All right, Article 33 Residential Regulations. These amendments will amend Section 8.1 and 8.3 of the bylaw to reflect that two-unit and three-unit residential uses are now regulated similarly as per the amendment voted on in Article 32.
So obviously 32 doesn't pass.
Correct. We have to pass it.
Well, the definitions, they don't pass. 32 would certainly clear, all right?
Do you think so?
If we use the word units and go to fine it.
I suppose we could make an amendment on the floor, right? To go back to family. Would that make sense?
Wouldn't be prepared for that.
Okay, so it's Passover 32. Doesn't pass. And and then. One of those that we've ever had something that were like potentially interconnected.
We usually punch them up.
Right. Right.
This is, this is better.
All right, so going back to this one, so these amendments will amend Section 8.1 and 8.3 of the bylaw to reflect that two-unit and three-unit residential uses are now regulated similarly as per the amendment voted in Article 32. These amendments are also intended to remove the site plan review requirement for accessory dwelling units and for two- and three-unit residential uses. Instead, the design performance and neighborhood impact of these uses will be required to comply with clear criteria set forth in the bylaw and section, section, or was that one you corrected?
No.
That is at in in the bylaw. At Section 6.4 or in Section. As per the amendments voted in Article 31. Are you willing to take this one and remember the two potential twists and turns?
So you're doing 32, Malcolm?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, Article 34 Root 7 tree requirements. This amendment will amend Root 7 landscape requirements because the existing requirements for a new tree for every 25 feet of frontage can be impractical. The new sentence added will provide flexibility for sites where dense tree planting is not possible, perhaps due to sidewalks, driveways, underground or overhead utilities, or other unique circumstances. No changes? Does anybody want to take that one?
I mean, I'll take that as well. We're gonna have to do multiple.
Yeah.
You can walk through seven. It's my neighbor.
So you're doing that one as well?
Yeah.
And did we communicate with the tree crew? I haven't had any.
I let her know that we were passing over this. But not passing.
We had modified it to give it more flexibility.
And instead of changing the amount of trees or the distance between.
Yeah. Okay. Article 35 B2 Zone Affordable Housing. Excuse me. This amendment will allow multi-unit residential or mixed-use development in the B2 zone to be permitted by right if at least 10% of the proposed housing units are affordable for at least 20 years. Currently, these uses are allowed only by special permit, a process which is long, risky, expensive, and whose outcome is never clear. By removing the special permit obstacle and allowing by right development, these amendments will promote more affordable housing units in the B2 zone, an area that has the infrastructure and utilities to accommodate more housing. I mean, the only other thing I might add there, Chris is, I mean, I guess it depends on what the public thinks of infrastructure, but sometimes we would also say access to major roadways, you know, as opposed to doing. Public transit, yeah.
And the.
Infrastructure, public transit and utilities.
Okay.
Is utilities generally known to mean broadband now?
Those are available even in Washington.
Isn't it like a short run to a building now though from?
Usually, I think what we mean here is municipal water and sewer. So if you want to say that, we should just say that.
Did you want to present this one?
Can I say water and sewer?
Sure, that's probably more clear to the general.
Can I make another suggestion?
Yeah.
For the board, so in the second to last sentence, by removing the special permit obstacle, these amendments will promote more affordable housing units. These amendments will promote more housing units. Including.
General.
Including affordable. So would the board be okay with that?
Yeah.
Do you want to change the title? You two don't want affordable housing and portable housing?
No, it's.
It's printed, but the, like, the incentive is the affordable housing, right? You don't get to do this unless you create the affordable housing. And that's what we want. Yes. Okay, Article 36 amend the zoning map on Silver Street. This zoning map amendment will change the zoning designation of three parcels totaling approximately six acres on Silver Street from R2 to R1A. I have had a conversation with Chris about this one, and I personally think we should consider passing over this article. We generally take a much more deliberate approach to reviewing this and do some studies, and we didn't have a chance to do that. We haven't had as much chance saying it's public. There's been some critical opposition on it. And as I mentioned, Pedro, I didn't think the juice would work to speed.
You want to present this one? So Randy's gonna pass you.
Pass, oh well, so here's the thing. I have a work emergency that has come up for my.
That's why you haven't chosen one, is that correct? You weren't holding out for the last one.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't, I'm sorry, it just came up today, so.
Are you going to this town meeting?
I am going to this town meeting.
Oh, no.
Very.
So the report will stay as, as written because that is what the planning board discussed and, and recommended in its public hearing, but the action at town meeting, the proposal will be to pass over.
So is the right thing to read it?
No, it'll just be a simple motion if the board agrees, a simple motion to pass over.
Now, is that a motion and a vote by the town meeting to pass it over?
A simple majority vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
None of the board can take it up next year with more discussion.
Passover, is that a term of art?
It's actually a Jewish holiday.
Yes, yeah.
It's, it's, it means that, that the, the meeting will take no action.
I, I know what it means, but I was just wondering if we're using that term.
It is what we have traditionally used when, when there's some circumstances arises between the time we print the warrant and the time we vote on it. If it is no longer desired to be, if the action is no longer.
I don't know if the motion says pass over or take no action or vote. We'll let, we'll let Pedro know.
And then do we need to read Articles 38 then, just as part of the report?
The moderator may ask for the planning board's report, so maybe you should choose somebody to read that. The citizens will be responsible for the motion.
Okay.
On Article 38, but the moderator may turn to the board for a report.
Jonathan, did you want to take that one too? It's very weedy.
I'm already doing two others.
Oh, that's right, okay. Jeremy, are you going to take that one?
Sure, I'm just reading this report.
Yes.
This sentence.
It shouldn't be, I mean.
Do you want to practice?
I'll practice a lot.
So Article 38 is, this article is by citizens petition because the petitioners did not attend the public hearing or provide the board with any information. The board could not make a recommendation.
Is it?
So, so that's just our report.
Is it motion report or report motion?
It's motion report.
But the moderator may not ask for our report for this one, or we'll leave you distant with.
Okay.
And can I suggest one other thing, one other edit to the planning board's report in the first paragraph on page one, the last sentence?
First paragraph on page one, last sentence.
After the hearing process, the board made the following recommendations on each of the zoning articles. Strike, it recommends the.
Oh.
Where are we now?
Last line of the first paragraph, strike, it recommends. So that it reads each of the zoning articles on the town meeting warrant. We've recommended twice enough. Okay, Chris, thank you so much for bringing this together.
That's, that's great, that's clear, so, oh, I'll let you go.
So given the edits we have discussed, is there any further discussion on, or edits on any of these items in the report? Okay. We'll vote on it. It looks like somebody has their hand raised. Ms. Levin?
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah, please go ahead.
I just want to apologize for nobody being at the March 9th Planning Board meeting where you were to discuss Article 38. Our gal had surgery and didn't make it. So you didn't get the information you needed, and I'm happy to help you with any information you need now if you have questions or I don't know where we're at with this.
I think whatever you bring to town meeting is, you know, will be on the same playing field as everyone else at town meeting. So just plan to make a good report there.
Okay, I'm really sorry about that, and thank you so much for your understanding.
Yeah, no problem, yeah, it happens all the time.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Flo West. Silver Street.
Yeah.
So you're passing over the Silver Street change.
Yes, sir.
Meaning that you will do some more studying, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
What it means is that we will not be taking any action on this matter at our meeting.
Okay.
At this town meeting.
Okay, so it would maybe, maybe next year or maybe never.
Exactly, usually what our process is, is sometime in June or so, or July, we start talking about what zoning items we want to consider for the coming town meetings, so 2024 town meeting.
So if, if, if we convince you not to make the change, do you have to vote that next year?
Well, we're starting over here.
Yeah, yeah.
Starting over.
And I have a question at town meeting, my wife and I are eight months residents here in Great Barrington. How do you tabulate the votes at town meeting?
Oh, you're gonna love it.
Is it?
Are you, are you registered, are you going?
You are a registered, okay, yeah, so you'll get, when you arrive.
You'll get a warrant.
You'll go to your, like you're placing, like you're voting, and you'll get a warrant, and there'll be different colored strips of paper in it. And you'll, at the time of voting, the moderator will ask for yes or no.
The moderator asked you chairman of the board.
Generally, it's very clear, yeah, there are certain items that do require secret ballot. And those ballots are part of your war as well.
And then sometimes the moderator will break out and then. All around, and you have to hold your handle.
It's indoor, it's.
It sounds like I've been excused from town meeting this year.
We need your votes.
It's like raw democracy in action, it's very, it's very fun in New England, is it?
But you missed the drive-in experience during COVID.
I actually personally am sad.
I kind of like it.
I never got into like the flashing lights, bonking.
We did, one year we had to like turn our phones on, go and like hold them up, so we didn't need that. Anyway, so good memories. Okay, great, anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Lori Joyce, I gave you some handouts there.
Okay.
Five G situation.
Yeah.
Well, my first question is, can people come who aren't registered voters in Great Barrington? Or is it only registered voters in Great Barrington who live in Great Barrington?
Correct.
I think it's the latter.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to check on that.
Only yours. On occasion, the people from outside Great Barrington about speed come in, getting any conditions.
Need that ahead of time?
Yeah.
So anyway, I, I thought that I might give a little talk to you guys. But I can, I gave you the handouts and if you would please read them, I actually gave everybody. But if you would please read it, I really, we all would really appreciate it. Basically, we're just trying to make sure that this technology is safe before they put them up in our neighborhood.
The technology being?
5G, the 5G small cell towers are closed because they don't look like the tree towers or the 4G towers. It's different, it's every five, 500 feet. And the thing about it also, it's not that it's necessarily so great. It's not that much faster than 4G, and it can't go through rain. So if you have an important meeting on Zoom and it's raining, you might have difficulty getting a signal. So that's odd, and also they can't, it can't go through trees. And so they're gonna cut down a lot of trees, that's not good. There's, there's so, there's so much about it.
Yeah, right now we're taking comments on how we should vote on this, and so you're sort of delving into the specifics of the issue.
That's fine, I, yeah.
But thank you for the information, and I appreciate you bringing it to us. So, okay, so any other comments on, oh, Vivian's got her hand in. Hi, Vivian.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Oh, great, I don't know if this is the time or citizen speak, but since we're on the topic, I just wanted to mention that more than 20 years ago, I was on a task force established by the planning board to research and to formulate a pioneering wireless siding bylaw for Great Barrington, which was approved at, by the town and was quite successful and became in many ways a model for many, many other towns. And based on that experience, even though I'm not involved in this current effort on the wireless siding bylaw, I, I did want to say that having dealt with the FCC and with the wireless industry's attempt to completely negate any local zoning control. At that time, we had to join in a coalition with other towns, with the US Conference of Mayors, with the National Governors Association, and with the American Planning Association in order to get the bill that was written basically by the industry, get that bill in Congress to carve out a small niche where a local planning and zoning could be decided on the local level. And it was a real struggle, and ever since then, the industry has been trying to basically undo what we did. This was in the formulation of the Telecommunications Act of 1996. So I'm really dating myself, but that's when these issues first, first arose here in Great Barrington and then, you know, all over the place. So having had that experience where seeing how the industry sees you folks, the planning board, any other local control through town meetings or the select board or whatever, they see it as a huge inconvenience, and they just want to get rid of it. So I think it's really important for all of us, especially those of you who are on the planning board and, and have taken on such responsibilities to safeguard our community and to provide an environment that, that makes our, our community environmentally and safe and health-wise, as well as, you know, providing, you know, the needed residential and commercial placements in town. I, I'm hoping that, that you all will follow the precautionary principle and, and support this citizens initiative on the town warrant. I'm sorry, I didn't know about your hearing in, earlier in, in, in spring. I, as I say, I haven't been following this issue, I'm not a part of the group that's. Um, I, as I say, I haven't been following this issue. I'm not a part of the group that's dealing with it, but I did hear about it. And based on my previous experience, um, I'm hoping that um, you you will take take that into consideration, and I'd be glad to uh, discuss any other uh, aspects of of the history of dealing with this with you. And I'm trying to um, get myself better informed on on the current issues about the hearings in Congress and the federal judge judgment, the court order at the federal level uh, for the FCC to to get them to uh, update their standards, but I'm not, I'm not on on that, yeah.
Vivian, I'm sorry, but so so we're we're well off course right now. Um, and um, if if this matter comes before the planning board or something we take up um, in a future session, um, thank you very much for giving us sort of like a high-level primer and some of the background to the town, but we'll remember that you're a resource. But I just want to make sure it's clear, um, the the board, this planning board did not receive any sort of detailed report on this proposal. So all we're doing right now is a procedural measure that says that because we didn't um, receive a report or any details from the petitioners, we we are not making a recommendation. So that that's all we're doing right now. It's just a procedural measure, so there's no specific decision being made at this point in time, but it may come up um, in the near future.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Can we stay on topic? Can we stay on topic, and can you save it for board issues in the conference? Okay, thank you. All right. And. Anybody else?
You want to?
Uh, sure.
I just had one more question because of a procedure, you know, that it's, uh, I just want to make sure that even though we weren't able to communicate, there was another document that you should have gotten that explained about a recent court case with the extinet in Flower Hill, where the judge said that basically um, it was preserving the local authority. Did you get those documents that were submitted?
You sort of passed time on that, Ms. Levin, so um, you know, we had to go through a certain procedure and then. And so so unfortunately, we're we're just, right now, we're just taking.
I guess my clarification that I need, it doesn't really matter that you haven't been able to vet. Is that what you're saying? We're still able to go forward with?
Yeah.
You guys got to make your argument at town meeting.
It's just that the planning board is neutral.
Yeah.
All right, all right, okay. Thank you so much.
The members might support you.
The individual members on their own might, but the board is a body, it's neutral.
Right.
All right, that's good. All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And I do have that document.
Oh, no, we did receive. Thank you. We did receive a bunch of information, so. Okay, so in terms of the report and so we've made here, do we have a a motion to? Oh. Oh.
Okay, I want just one clarification.
Your name, please.
Given.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
On on Silver Street, so we will not be voted on at the town meeting?
That's, that's correct.
That's what we're gonna recommend.
We are recommending.
But still, town meeting has to act on that. They have to vote.
But there will be no vote.
Simple majority.
What we're gonna tell town meeting is that we're not gonna, that we choose to pass over that article. So that it's not gonna be considered at town meeting.
Theoretically, in a town meeting, you could say.
Theoretically, that's, yeah, town meeting say, no, we want to vote on this and vote that recommendation down, and then, so it's possible.
So so we're gonna, we're gonna ask town meeting to pass over, town meeting had to let us pass over.
By a simple majority.
If for some reason, then, you know.
Usually.
Station wants to vote on it, then they're gonna vote on it.
And and we're gonna be, and we're gonna be three or four hours into this meeting, and believe me, they're gonna want to pass over.
Pass over.
I don't know about that, so. Like to, I would like to get to an action on this, so are you satisfied for?
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to, are we adopting this? Adopting um, the town meeting report as amended.
Second.
And we have seconded by Jonathan? Jonathan seconded over here. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further stuff? All in favor?
All right.
Any votes? Motion care? Okay, great, thanks, guys. All right, so next item, board and subcommittee updates issues in concern to Jeremy. We'll start with you.
I have one, so if if this does not pass town meeting, then it is what? Uh, so article thirty-eight hates.
Article thirty.
Yeah, so if it doesn't, I'm sorry, yeah. So if article thirty-eight doesn't pass town meeting, then come back to us. Um, because if there is a special town meeting, then you may be able to, I think you have to redo the, you have to get signatures again, right? And, oh, can it be brought up again?
What's the rule?
So what he's asking is if it's been argued.
Fifteen minutes.
Article is turned down, voted down, can it be brought back? If we present something.
Fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes.
No, 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 no.
At the next time. Oh, the next time?
Yeah, if voted down, you know, if we present something, if there's, there's a three-year wait.
Yeah.
If it's presented again, if it's a citizen's petition, is it the same way? It has to do with the planning board's recommendation. I'm sorry, but I don't have the legislation in front of me. Okay. Can't answer that. It's good speculation.
All right, okay, well, hopefully it won't get voted down.
Right.
Yeah, good luck.
But maybe come back.
Well, good luck to all of you too. It's going to affect everybody's health in this town. That's why we're doing this. It's only about health. All of our health.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so Jeremy, anything else?
Well, and the other things after meeting, you can focus on the things that.
Jeremy, this is supposed to be your board issues.
Even fun with the call.
Any other board issues?
Jackie has one.
Jackie?
As I've not been in this position before at a town meeting.
Yeah.
And you're not going to be there because I always, and when I'm sitting there in my car.
Jonathan's been there like thirty.
Just let me, let me. When I'm sitting in the car and I'm always waiting for you to come out and explain something.
Yeah.
To me, sitting in the.
She won't be there.
I know, because you won't be there.
And you won't be in your car.
I. So I'm wondering if we get into a situation where we need explication or something, who steps up to represent the planning board with these individual items?
So I think we have always had such a collegial um, relationship that we tend to sort of stick together um, in the auditorium.
It's usually on the lap, right?
Yeah. But um, also um.
There are technical questions I will answer.
We, yeah.
If it's more of a sort of proposing the article as advocacy, that's that's more.
Or a point of clarification, or I don't really understand. So it's just automatic.
Yeah, if you think of something that shouldn't have been said that was omitted, stand up and say it.
Correct, yeah.
So you, so there's like, yeah, there's like a podium or two podiums and you.
Just queue up at the mic.
And then you just, yeah, wait in lines and.
My first year here, I went to it, but it's like so long ago, so.
Yeah, no, it will be fine.
Okay, just checking. Thank you.
Okay, the only other thing I'll raise um, is I have been um, asked to discuss whether or not we would consider changing either the day or time of our meeting because of the perpetual conflicts with school committee meetings. Um, and I don't worry about the fuck are we meeting over here at the planning board, but um, I want to just put that out there. I I'm personally not inclined to change it, but I wanted to make sure that I wasn't just acting on my own behalf.
If I can fight them.
Sure.
Very rarely have another, a different night available.
Yeah, okay, so.
You have so many pieces, it's like Kim's not even here.
I know, I know. So, okay.
Chris is being the buzzkill, so that's.
That's fine. I'm fine with that, but I just wanted to bring it forward.
So can we have a planning board meeting without a town, town president? No.
I don't think really the town wants that.
I can't reading and not even tell.
It's up to you.
And the town definitely doesn't.
Make sure it's noted.
About Kim.
Um, Chris, do you have a town planner's report?
No.
No town planner's report. Any citizens speak? No? Anybody out there want to, citizens speak? Anybody uh, joining us online? Vivian or Eileen, citizens speak? Eileen's cat? No, okay, hearing no citizens speak, we'll adjourn at six forty.
All right.